What is going on?
We do have somebody that's in.
Alright.
Still very good. What? That doesn't make much sense. Should I check my speaker?
I think it's gonna be alright.
Well, that looks okay. Hello?
Okay, if you wanna start the zoning board meeting of December eighth?
Yep.
Twenty twenty five?
Going to town in minutes. Do I start? Cause I got some.
Sure.
I think it's cloud ten properties. Around this.
Okay, probably true.
And on line sixteen, it's just owners plural, not possessive. And on line seventeen, it's Megan Tenny and Josh Cloud.
Right.
Common. Line thirty one. It was a one bedroom apartment. That was to, you know, even though, I mean, on their application, they, they, they said studio and then they said one bedroom, but it was a one bedroom, I think. And line thirty two. Dormers plural.
Is it? Isn't it just one big dormer on the back?
Yeah. Is that right? Cause I thought, okay.
He just runs it full length.
I thought they were gonna do one. Okay.
I think on line twenty two, rather than the Meriden Village freshwater system, I think it's, at best, it's portable. Fresh isn't exactly an industry term.
Are you jealous?
No.
We accept another entity.
Don't need anything else here?
Okay. Alright, is it supported?
Sure.
Okay, any further discussion? In the minutes, all those in favor? Okay. Alright, we'll turn to piece twenty twenty five oh six. Um, I don't, I don't believe you've been here with us.
I don't know.
Let me just run through our procedural. We had the applicant, described the application to us, run through it, even though we've got materials and we're all looked at. And Tom, we wanted to see your questions. We'll ask questions if we need to clarify anything.
Okay.
And then, once we feel like we have all the information, we'll determine if there's enough, if it's a complete application that we can proceed with. And then, if, if we determine that, then we'll open the public hearing, we'll hear from the Butters, and then other residents of the town, or a chance to speak, we'll close the public hearing. And then we'll deliberate. We may have more questions for you, we may have questions for Butters, whatever, while we're deliberating and hopefully we'll reach a decision. We're getting pretty short time, sounds fine. Okay. So this is case twenty twenty five oh six, Alan Stephanie Shapiro. Application concerns the request for a special exception number twenty four through solar energy system at forty Columbus Jordan Road. The project involves adding three hundred eighty six square feet of panels to an existing array of four hundred eighty square feet. This supplies the home on the property, more than five hundred feet square foot, feet of panels requires as an unimproving.
Okay.
Just getting the things here. Okay, so. Why don't you tell us what you want to do?
Okay, thank you, thank you. You know, our motivation for, you know, for purchasing the property at Columbus Jordan was, we needed a space to, for my father-in-law, he's living with us. And that house provided a separate and independent garage apartment, as well as a main house, so his and his independence, so that was really important to us. As a result, we're experiencing some higher than average energy costs supporting two dwellings. And we're working to defray that into the future. You know, in particular, we're trying to defray that by adding solar. So, we, last month, we received the building permit, to install fifteen solar panels, that feeds the main house, and those panels, those, of that permit was, will be taught in New Hampshire Electric. It's a grid tied system. The issue here tonight is the exemption we have applied for to install additional solar panels, that will be an off-grid system, that will supply the apartment above the garage for my father-in-law. Okay, so, as per, you know, documents that we submitted and the picture is up there, the lines were, one line and part of another line of panels, will be dedicated to the house. The second line, part of the second line will be dedicated to the, to the apartment. The ones in, that picked, the lines in black are the ones from the existing permit that was already granted. The ones in, the line in red is for those panels that would be attributed to the garage apartment. One thing, you know, in addition to the information that we have in that, the documents that we submitted, the distributor of the solar panels sent us two additional panels, that were not included in the original design, you know, of the gridded system or the off-gridded system. And we feel that adding those additional two panels, this is kind of like a bonus that they, they sent us, they only, would provide additional solar gain for us, you know, on what we found are many cloudy days here in the upper valley. So, we're looking to, you know, potentially amend this exemption to include two additional solar panels. Each, the area of the two panels is sixty seven square feet. Each panel is approximately thirty four square feet. The additional two panels will increase the panel area of the exemption from three sixty eight or thirty five square feet. So I apologize, this is something that came up just recently with the delivery of these panels, and we feel that it will be beneficial to further augment, you know, our defray cost associated with.
Give me three sixty eight or three eighty six?
Three, uh, three sixty eight is the, is the exemption, what we apply for in the exemption.
Okay, it's written three eighty six.
Oh.
Three sixty eight. On this page. From what you just read.
Let's, let's just go with.
It's just fine. Anyway. I just, I just want, I just want to get to the total, like, maybe start off with a different.
So what would total be with the two additional panels? Uh, the total for both the permanent one that is already, the total would be nine thirty six square feet. That's all, Stephanie, do you want to? Anything else you want to say? Is that a sufficient review or?
I think so, I was just trying to find the, size of the campus.
Okay, in terms of their dimensions?
Their area.
Their area.
Thirty three point four four, right?
Yeah, thirty, yeah. That includes the outside frame.
Right. What's that come to? In height and width?
We have that here.
Yeah, yeah. Right here. Metric.
There are large panels there. But, yeah, the metric's right there.
Ninety three, ninety four, almost, buddy. Just over fifty one.
Inches?
Yeah. So those are big. I was wondering about six hundred sixty watt.
That's what, yeah. That caught my attention when I first saw it. Wow. They're bi-facial too.
Right.
So they, they give us the upper, so after they're built, we're gonna put white lock, you know, to try to increase that yield. You know, we're doing everything to increase the yield.
Steve, do you have the tax mapping?
You just want the map and lot number or?
Just to, to see where the Butters are.
Sure. I'll have to share it, but let's see if we can find it. Gonna do sort of mark T I S. Well, I was just gonna use a tax act system.
Right.
I think it also might be, well, maybe it's not. I was gonna say, if you turned on the topo layer, so that it showed not just the.
I was just gonna show like, did Google Earth or no?
Oh.
Oh. Well, we can see, yeah. I can, I have a.
Well, I can show you what the, who the Butters are.
Here, have your Butters list, yeah, and then see, see the lot layouts.
We got somewhere else. I can put topo. What I was trying to get at is it's below the road. It, you know, it's, in terms of it's, it's pretty low visibility.
Yeah, if I remember right, that's a pretty good drop over the driveway.
You know, it's.
Yeah, yeah. That's, that's fine for nasty, we just wanna see the, the lots initially.
Yeah, that doesn't really help. I thought it, it's just not fine enough, that's a twenty foot conduit interval, so. If you want, I can show you here.
Well, Steve can bring it up there.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I'm just looking for. Okay, so I'm gonna share that screen for anybody that cares. Alright. Put this over there, so. That's sort of the way it lays. Ladoo Hill is here, you come up through the covered bridge, you turn left, you go by Greg and Tara Rogers' house. Mr. Barrows, I think this is Dave Clifton here, who's here tonight. And this is Virginia Beggs, but she's a ways down the road. Is there a house on lot four, or that number four there?
No, it's just on.
Trees.
Yeah. Well. You know, Ben. I think we've got enough of an application. Let's see.
Did we agree with that? That we're good?
Hey, great.
Okay. So. I guess we'll start with our public hearing and open public hearing, we have, Butters here, who would like to comment?
Hi, I'm Dave Clifton. Lot number ten, seventy seven Ladoo Road. I stuck my head in your driveway the other day to take a look at this, and I commend you on the work that you're doing. I'm curious as to why you weren't choosing to grid-tide the entire thing, but I'm sure that's a design discussion rather than, something that needs to be discussed here in the, in the Z B A, so.
It would require upgrading New Hampshire Electric Transformers.
Ah.
So.
Okay.
So you decided to not become a net producer, but rather to just keep them on property?
Well, half of it, ten K is, is signed red. But if you wanted to go above that, we would have to improve the transformers and probably the line as well. So we didn't want to take that route because we're trying to get it before the end of the tax year. And I feel more I'll be doing what you're saying.
Sure. No objections for the project.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Do we have anybody online that isn't a Butter?
Uh, no, we got some fellow gone asleep at Valerie Newton's house. I'm not sure if that is even.
It's Tony.
Is it Tony?
Is that? Oh, he was facing, there he is, yep, he's there.
Oh.
Okay, so he's the one that did some of your sketch work here and so.
Yeah.
We're working with him. And apparently.
You see how cool.
So the batteries will last long enough for long clouds and dark nights?
That's what we're, that's what we're hoping, that's the plan, you know, but in the, the off-grid system is, there is a tie to power, to New Hampshire Electric.
Cause you, you said.
My dad will still have heat.
So the inverter is such that it looks for solar power first. Looks for the battery. And if those are not available, then it looks to.
Perfect, it just doesn't feed back in the way.
Right.
Yeah, that's, that's, part of it does, right?
Yeah, but not that.
Yes, the additional part.
Not the part there.
Yep.
It's like, it's like two separate systems.
Right.
That's why, that's why I was asking whether, I didn't know it got tied in as a third option. Boom, okay. We don't have anybody else?
Uh, no, no, just, just.
Um, does he have a professional standing in this, or is he just helping out?
Uh, well.
He's the installer. He's the installer?
Yes.
Well, no, Alan and I are the installers.
Wow. System designer or something, a consultant?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, consultant, again. Alright, so, I guess we're close to public hearing now, if we have anybody else that wants to comment.
Mira was here for the other, case, which I think has been withdrawn, but might have questions anyways.
Okay. I guess we can go through the.
Yeah, no, I think, I think we, that's what we do, but I, you know, from my perspective, I think it's a fine modification, it's, you're adding, you, you see very little of it from the road unless you're deliberately looking, it's, the neighbors obviously aren't, objecting, and, you know, it's, it's an extension of what's been approved already. And so I don't see, I think it's, from my perspective, it's, it's a, they're here because of a math threshold, and the threshold isn't a material difference in terms of the impact.
Right.
Of the project.
It's pretty much how I was seeing.
That's how I look at it.
Now, these, these are ground mount, are they? What, what type of mount are they, are they, a structure like at the fountain school, or are they posts or?
Uh, they're, they're four by six posts. You know, essentially, they're laminated, you know, so, uh, two by, two by sixes, three two by sixes put together. To, so we have a little, they're a little stronger than a four by six post. And drilled forty eight inches into the ground with loose soil, you know, like, it's maybe like forty two to forty inches. These posts are put in, cemented up the land surface. Uh, there are eight posts on each row, on each line.
Okay, so.
And rails connecting the posts, the panels sit on these rails.
So, so, it's not what's known as a post?
Yeah, yeah, it's not, no.
It has posts, it's part of the structure.
Yeah, we, we designed the posts to be a little bit stronger than just,
Right.
you know, a string, four by, you know, four by six post.
Okay.
Will these be at an angle? Uh, the, the, the panels are at a forty five degree angle, so the rails, there are arms, you know, that attach to the posts at a forty five degree angle, rails at the top and bottom of these arms, the panels sit on the rails. So the panels would be at forty five degrees and they're stationary, they're not, you know, they're not moving. Okay.
Okay, should we go through the?
Yes.
Let's see, solar installation is requiring a zoning board, planning board review. This is a little different, isn't it? The, part of it's already been approved by, just with a building permit.
Right, because by our ordinance, they get up to five hundred feet.
Right, so did they get a new building permit for just the additional part out of a decision?
Once this process is over, they'll get a permit for tho, for those additional panels and that'll get inspected.
Okay, so, alright. That's interesting, I would have thought we were giving them the whole one thousand.
But it wasn't there at the beginning.
Well, you are, you're giving them the right to do the thousand, but they had sub five hundred before.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, we, we kinda saw this as, really as two separate systems, so.
But, but it's still break, make it break the threshold, so it, even though this one's smaller, it requires approvals. And that's why I wondered if we just do the whole thing, but. I think it makes sense that, that's already been approved, that's already, there's no, no reason for us to go through the details of,
Yep.
previously approved system.
Right.
We're not changing that at all.
The fact that they are identical is irrelevant, cause when I'm looking at the first one.
Right.
And I suspect we'll see this again, we will see other people adding panels as time goes on.
No, I think.
Yeah. Is that a new book?
No, that's an old one. That's what I discovered after I grabbed it from the stack.
I just.
It's like a really old one, I don't know where.
Different color cover.
Yeah.
Okay, so, why don't we go through, let's see. What zone is this?
RR, yeah.
Obviously R on.
Okay.
Entirely R.
Higher zone.
Right.
RR, yeah, okay. The dodgeball thing. Okay. I don't know what they mean exactly by, a commercial meter. They mean they're feeding back time, back to the grid to feed into it. Um, I believe that's what they mean. And this is not.
Right.
New Hampshire Electric comes and puts the meter in them.
Yeah, that's further, that's the grid. Right, that's, this is, yeah, please.
Alright, standards to be met, let's stick with that one for now. Location, systems will be located or screened to minimize the visual impact from budding properties. The purposes of this ordinance, ground mount solar array shall be considered a structure. We just discussed that some degree in the, in the, location, the terrain there makes it very hard to see unless you're really looking for it. Nobody's gonna be stepping out their front door and saying, my God, what's that?
And they're not in a setback zone, so they're active.
Right.
That's not an issue.
Fencing. I don't see any, any reason, any need for any fencing, there's no particular safety concerns.
Height of the high end. The height of, uh, what do you mean, the, the second? The peaky, the highest point of your array. Uh, above ground? Yes, above grade. Uh, it would. It's not that tall, is what I'm getting at. Yeah, the, the second. Was it?
Eight feet.
Yeah, so, I, we've got a max, and it isn't anywhere near the max.
Right.
And it's all to the good in terms of the slope of this site. You know, whereas the top of that is even closer to the bed of the road.
Okay, number three here is utilities, unless specifically weighed by the zoning board, all distribution lines, so the system will be under. Um, so the connection between the system, is, is there any indoor portions, where's the,
The, yeah.
The batteries and the?
Batteries in the garage, the inverters in the garage.
Okay, so they're not micro inverters, it's a.
No.
Okay. Not that it really makes a difference.
Yeah.
And to us.
We did trench the line, and then Dave came out and looked at that.
For the grid tied one for this?
Well, for both.
Okay.
You took garbage one trash? Yeah, we just. Smart.
Through solar components, all electric, solar components must have U L listing or equivalent.
I, I think it's the, the inverters, they have U L code on them, so I think so will the solar panels.
Utility company, company approval, well, there is no, utility company approval required for this because they're not.
No connection.
Great, grid tied.
They're screwed the other ones.
Yeah. That's good. And decommissioning all proposals for a solar electric system, must include provisions to ensure that once the facility is no longer in use, it will be completely removed from the site within ninety days.
It's in their building permit, they wrote it. So I've seen it and write it.
Yeah.
Do you do a letter, or is that not happening anymore?
It's part of the application that they've.
Yeah, so it's in, right.
Yeah.
I know, I read it, so I know.
I included a paragraph in the document.
They're relatively easy, it's not like the wind towers and so on where.
Oh, no.
It could be a, a much more difficult task to decommission, or, cell phone tower for that matter. Okay, for those, those are pretty easy now. We've got the, the regular or special exception conditions. Let me remember the page.
Bottom of forty six.
Forty six.
Yep, there we go.
Thank you. Alright, special exception, as specified in this ordinance, may be permitted only if the board of adjustment makes the following findings of fact. Number one is the use is specifically allowed as a special exception under the terms of the ordinance, which is, the use will not be detrimental to the character or enjoyment of the neighborhood. And in our discussion, we were thinking that they wouldn't even notice it. Wouldn't see it, I would say, look for it. The proposed use will comply with the applicable regulations of the district in which it is to be located. You know, what regulations would apply to this, I don't think there are any specific ones other than building code.
Or you have any setbacks in those.
Right, yeah. The granting of a special exception must include remedy for any existing zoning violations on the property.
None that were.
No, no zoning violation, it's good. The capacity of existing or planned community services or facilities, including streets and utilities, will not be adversely affected, should have no effect whatsoever. A few trucks during construction. Traffic on roads and highways in the vicinity shall not be adversely affected, there should be no additional traffic caused by this. The use will not be contrary to public health, safety, or welfare by reason of traffic congestion or hazards, undue risk to life or property, unsanitary and harmful emissions, or waste disposal, or similar adverse conditions. I don't believe there are any adverse conditions that this could create. It's passive.
Yep.
Appropriate adequate facilities will be provided for the proper operation proposed use. Yep, no, the, once properly installed, it's, it'll just run, just do that. And no undue municipal expense will be created, there should be no additional municipal expense, so those all look good. Okay, I hope Matt's writing over there, means he's whipping up a motion. Those parts are in.
Yeah, I would um make a motion to grant the special exception. Uh, to uh have a total of nine hundred and thirty six square feet of solar panels at forty Columbus Jordan Road. Um, based on sat satisfaction of the section three point one eight D standards. Findings of fact to include that um the property is sufficiently screened to minimize visual impact. Uh, the solar panels will not be visible to abutting property owners, solar panels are located uh down downhill from the road. Uh, and their height is such that they will not be easily seen from the road. Uh, there being no need for fencing, lines are buried, batteries, inverters are contained inside the garage. Um, all components have uh been approved. Uh, represented by the owners that they've been approved components with UL labels. Um, the uh portion of the uh system that's connecting to the grid has been approved by the New Hampshire Electrical Cooperative. The rest of the system uh is not being connected to the grid. Um, and there is a sufficient decommissioning plan uh in the building permit. And all the criteria and section five point six B for special exceptions are satisfied.
Yeah.
Um, were you gonna talk about the square footage?
No, I was actually gonna say.
Okay, um, I think you should say. Um, that we're approving the addition of four hundred and thirty six. Square feet, bringing the total to, if you wish, you know, to include that, but I think we should be specific. Um, for our conversation already, saying that we're talking about the additional approving. A special exception for the additional square footage of solar panels. And not for the original.
That's our per year, we don't have a say in the first five hundred.
It's already done, yeah.
Right, and we went back and forth about the numbers, I didn't get them all to add up in my name, it's four hundred and eighty is what. Is in existence and what does not require a special exception. Uh, so adding another, I got the total amount was nine hundred and thirty six square feet, so whatever the difference is, is what being added. Two there that you don't care about, that they sort of get in the next package, right? Two squ-. Well, it's they they need a special exception for any any square footage over five hundred, yeah. Right.
Yeah, that's fine. Is it, is that true, if somebody came in here, I mean, I'm just for sake of argument, they come in and say they they want six hundred feet. We've we say six hundred feet, we don't say a hundred over the five hundred.
No, we're saying for.
But I'm talking about uh somewhat some other case.
If it were in two stages, we would only be looking at the one hundred, because they would have gotten the five the first time, it's the fact that it came in two phases. I think, okay, right?
Okay, I mean, I I it's it's it ends up the same, I'm just.
Yeah, I don't think our ordinance actually envisions this scenario, it should, but it doesn't, um. But they they end up with more than five hundred, so we need, so they need the special exception to go beyond the five hundred.
Yeah, I mean, it ends up the same.
So you you're right, they were they're adding four hundred and fifty six. But they had twenty to spare on the five hundred.
Right.
I mean, that's that's I mean, that's the other reason why I just say it'd be so clean, just to say what it's what it is, but. If you if you add your parenthetical or other phrase saying by adding.
Do the math, you know, if you could put the two pieces in the end to near point, you could just approve the total.
Well, we're not approving the total, we're approving additions.
It's a distinction without a difference there.
Yeah, you're right.
If the total array is under five hundred square feet, you don't need a special exception. If the total array is greater than five hundred square feet, then.
I mean, if there were five hundred and one, they wouldn't be here for one foot, they'd be here for the five hundred and one feet. But but if it only be one, but you're right.
We'd only go with one at.
Yes.
I think we.
Do we wanna spend all night doing that?
No, no, but.
Yeah, we got to the good one.
Right.
I just wanted it to reflect um what we've thought of, because people are gonna be doing this all the time, people are adding, you know. Right, but I wanna go put up another solar.
But I think it's fine to say we've given them a special exception to to add the delta, bringing the total to X.
Yes, and and I think that's the right thing to do, because if someone were to challenge. Our activity, it shouldn't affect what was already in place, it should just be the thing we had a right to.
Get the first one by right.
Right, yeah, so so that's why I think it's worth figuring out the right language.
I would have it like this, it'd be nice to get it, we're good.
The thing that caught my attention that I wonder if we can soften is, I think you said um. Isn't visible, the array isn't visible from the street, and it may be technically visible in spaces and we don't want that to be the representation. It's fine the way it is.
Prove it anyway.
Exactly, that's what I'm getting at, is so we're not, we don't wanna state something that isn't true and have.
Like you say, just put minimally.
Yeah.
Is it only not seeable because there's trees growing right now, because the trees are gonna die someday, now it will be visible.
Also, that's part of the thing, is you're trying not to set yourself up. Like for, oh, he cut a tree, I now can see it, it's now up for review, if. I don't think, having driven and walked that road and knowing where that array is. Even if there were no trees there in that neighborhood, I don't think it would be an issue for anyone. And it I don't think it should be a reason we should re-restrict it or or reject it if it were in fact a bald sight. Okay, so I'm just trying to be a little. More paranoid, I guess, about something happening in the future that we just don't need to bite into. But on that, I would second it. Right, okay, yeah, so I I I I clar- I crossed off my language about it being screened by trees. The the screening to minimize vis- visual impact is the fact that it is downhill from the road. And therefore it's height. Visual impact is minimal. Correct. To the public. Yeah, the the array will be minimal minimally visible from the road. Because we have other arrays, I'm thinking specifically shells that. Aren't visible except in a couple of places and you see the whole thing, but it's not offensive, it's not.
Well, we have we have a bunch that.
There's a little bit down by the school, that sticks out pretty plainly.
Anyway, that's that was my one little thing. Do you, so with with that amendment clarification as to the visibility of the array, I renew my motion to grant the special exception.
Okay, is there further discussion on the motion? Ready for a vote?
Yes.
All those in favor? Okay, there you go.
Look too painful. Yeah, so you will get a written decision in about a week and then you can move on to the to the permit and you'll be good. Or, you know, come see me, you can probably get the permit in between, nobody's gonna really care, but but the the written decision will be in about, takes about a week to generate it.
Okay.
By the time we go through this process.
Okay, do we stay or do we go?
You you can, you can do whatever works for your night.
Yeah, I'm interested in the next solar project.
Okay, well, the the next one was withdrawn. Um, and the applicant, the Morse's came in about a week ago and said the cost to connect to Ever Source was thirteen thousand dollars and they weren't interested in that.
Is that because because of the different, happened to add transformers, are they?
Um.
If you found that.
Whatever it is that they.
Right, I mean, they they put one tracker up and were a year ago, some time, not a time ago. And that one comes by right, because it's under five hundred, and then the second one, just like this application, would have put it over five hundred and I suspect. Knowing where your property is, the first one wasn't wildly, you weren't wildly enthusiastic about the first.
But they they were welcome in the right.
Right.
But uh.
Um, and so that's.
Second one.
But we were gonna talk about, at the very least, and have.
But I do wanna put it on record, because if it ever comes up, I I'm opposed, not necessarily to the fact that there's a solar array on their property. Right. I think that's fine. Um, it's the location, I that is a large track of land that has a lot of exposure anywhere. And where they put it on the property line, which is now a significant feature, but I will see just about anywhere on our property. Uh, a second one or third one or however many more they could ever go there would not be welcome.
I mean, he here is the is the, you know, this is the Reed Farm. For many generations on twelve A that the Morse's bought, uh, Mira and his family bought the lot that got created by the planning board before they sold the farm. And so you are looking at basically open fields with no screening and beautiful views to Mount Ascotney. Um, and the Morse's put it on their land and put it in their place, but it is right where these guys would probably build a house.
Oh, no, when we got the land uh surveyed, heard and where our, it's 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 our front yard.
Right.
It's right there.
And and is that, is there no protection, I get that they have a right to put the array on. But are there no site plan strings to it?
For what? It's it's like it's like it's like an antenna, I mean, there's it's a building permit.
Right, you can't necessarily put a structure within a setback zone, is it?
Oh, no.
In the setback zone?
Oh, no, it's nowhere near the set, I mean, it's just so, but it's, it is literally their property is the top of the hill and that goes over. It is right, and of course, they don't even see the pretty solar panel side, they see the backside, they they see the back. I mean, when I saw it go up, I said, oh, boy.
Yeah.
And and they did.
Let them know that. It's again, it's the location.
They've been sensitive to that, I think, I think they're sorry they didn't have more contact with you, because you're right, there are other choices.
Well, that's funny, and I think the same reason why I don't like it is why they put it there.
Yeah.
Because they do not see it from their property. So so you said it's it's clearer than setbacks and everything?
Yes.
Okay, because it is considered a structure.
Right.
In terms of.
Yeah, no, it is, I mean, it is perfect, it's a perfectly legal accessory to to the property, it's just a second one. If anything, a second one would have created an opportunity for you to seek some relief, screening something.
Well, we feel like that might be a room for our, you know, a if if you haven't passed it to the planning board.
Right, well, what we've said in the VR zone, we review them, because the lots are small, here, you're talking current use lots, they're both big lots.
So, um, but would it really be that onerous to change our ordinance so that they all got a view, a a look at?
Right, I can say the energy committee would oppose it vigorously, because they want people to get these as easily as possible.
Okay, but do we want, all the good things that you want society to do shouldn't be at the expense.
Oh, no, I think it's something that can be considered, but it was specifically made easy up to five hundred.
Sure.
And in.
But I don't think anybody. Having presented that.
I mean, a a smarter test would be, can anybody see it?
Right, or or is there?
As opposed to what zones it in?
Yeah.
Cause we had VR zone ones that nobody could see.
Right.
That got review, and in this case, he's not VR and he got no review.
Right, no, I.
Yeah.
It feels like we could improve our zoning ordinance without without curtailing or or crimping the incentive to do solar and all that. But also protect the neighbors.
Right, I'm always impressed at how hardback the energy committee bites, those guys, I mean, they they think this process is too much, right? You should be able to get a building permit, no, 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 and and we tell them that, and you know, I mean, and and so it's uh, but. There is no Morse case, they withdrawn it, so they have no permit to build another one, and you know, hopefully they'll continue to have discussions. I mean, as you guys build your house, you'll you'll have big pieces of equipment, maybe you can talk about a relocation of the solar jack. Yeah, I mean, and the Morse's seem very reasonable people, I don't think they were, they they didn't have a house to compare to. It sits in the middle of a field, it was gonna be visible in the field somewhere.
Yeah, it was unfortunate the s- the spot they selected, and and again, I had no right to have input, because it was. Right. Within the zoning laws and everything like that, it's just when they asked me if they wanted a second, but I left them know that I.
It wasn't all that good about the first one.
First one.
But I thought it might be an opportunity to relocate.
Yeah.
Both of them, you know, just I thought that's, I thought that might.
We never got to the point of the discussion where, that's what I would have said, I said, if you could, if you move it. I would, you know, like we said, you know.
And we did have, I mean, again, we don't wanna talk about the Morse's property anymore, there 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 the thing is withdrawn. You remember the one, the three solar trackers that you did on quarter, and and you know, the neighbor has continued to be very concerned.
Yeah.
About what she sees and and despite burns and 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 things that the other folks did, but I think. So, you know, these things do, not everybody sees them as as the salvation that that some do.
Right.
And so we actually had um in the, you know, we're having, we're getting a one megawatt, uh, which will be an event, you know, that.
How was that project going?
It's, they can get a building permit anytime, they're they're through all processes, I think they'll do it in the spring.
And it's been a long time.
But we literally had a butters indicating that that we were gonna be finding dead birds who had been killed as they flew over from the heat that's generated. Uh, and the folks who built it said, well, if it generates that much heat, it's not doing its job, because it's supposed to absorb the sun, not reflect it. But people, you know, at a certain level and a certain size, people get quite concerned about these things. And so a megawatt, that's.
Well, it's just.
Little commercial.
Right, five acres, essentially five acres, it's gonna take a lot of space. Right across the street, you know, I mean, that little field right there, I mean, it it's, it has some advantages, because it sets up above stage road and you can't see it from one twenty. And maybe they'll buy the Reich's house, because the Reichs are gonna look at, you know, they ought to at least let them plug in.
Right.
So, but but anyways, that one's approved and so that one's, and and that company, by the way, is a really good. They have been, I mean, they brought professionals who were planting trees, long term, they took all the up, they took all the right, all the um. Acceptance of any liability of anybody's trees hitting their fence, that's on them, it's not on the on the on the property on the other side. And they they are planting something just under a hundred trees around the edges of that to to minimize the law. Cause it's a big property, it's five acres in the middle of what is a much larger property, the bigger part became drainage issues. Um, for Dupree property, but anyways, um, we'll, I'll keep you posted if I hear anything, but I think for the moment. No, thank you for coming.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, so so you're a consultant there, is he yes? Readily available for uh, does he have a card or a channel?
I can, I can.
I can get you, we, yeah, we have building permits with his name on them, and and so. Is is he still here?
Just.
No, he's, oh, well, the chair is.
Oh, okay, I didn't see him up there, but now they, the guy that installed mine is long retired and I might need some help at some point, so.
You know, it's it's Tony.
Yeah.
Tony.
Newton?
Yeah.
Tony Newton.
You know.
Valerie's Hospital?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, just trying to get my pieces, I knew it's not Valerie Newton.
Yeah. You need the, you know, I I think his contact information was in.
His uh mailing address is.
Yeah, so yeah, I can, if you if you need his email.
So I did have one other thing for the ZBA to to talk about. When you guys are ready, just let me know.
Yep.
Uh, but take your time.
No, that's all right.
I'm just gonna call it up. Take me a minute to get it. I don't know, some for some of you, this will be a walk down memory lane. Uh. But I think we.
Yeah, two thousand five, so there was.
Yeah, about two thousand eight.
Oh, two thousand eight.
I don't know why I've got all of them.
Oh, yeah, two thousand five oh eight.
Oh, you're right, you're right, yeah. Like to go to, this is nobody to share with, so I don't know why, has it just opened, maybe I'm back, it's just what it's been doing. Do that, um. Back in two thousand five, let's go right to the picture. And we'll come back to the words. On Hayward Road, ever since I was a little kid, growing up right there, there has been the Spencer property, you know? And the Spencers lived here and Win Spencer, before zoning, built a duplex. And he had three units on one lot. And the Spencers, you know, got older and kids. Became in a position to own some of the properties, and both of them have both senior Spencers have passed away. Win Spencer, the son, who was an electrical inspector for the city eleven, owns the the whole property, his sister has built the house in the back. Uh, but this is the way the tax map, so this is, in my experience in the town planning field, this is the only law I have ever seen. Created by subdivision or by zoning board and then by subdivision, that was undersized. It didn't meet the requirement, but in in its wisdom, the zoning board said. Two lo- two units on a small lot is better than three units on a bigger lot, three is more non-conforming than getting two on one and one on the other. And 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 the caveat, we can go to the decision, because I know Matt will wanna read the words. Said, as long as the Spencers own it, it can be a duplex, when the. Said, as long as the Spencer's own it, it can be a duplex. When the Spencer's sell it. It needs to be a single family house. And so Spencer, it is it is remaining or is not even Spencer. It's continuous ownership. So it's not about the who the person is. It's about, and so. All these years since your decision, nothing really changed, other than we created a separate law. And we've got. I guess that was the notice. Here's the decision. And if I could, I don't know why. It's a difficult fact. Just wants to be. Yeah, see, it's not really open. It's just they try to try right clicking on it. Now go to open at the top there. Ah, see, that's why you're returning. Um, whoa, that's probably a little small. So there, I'll give you a second.
So how is this impacted now by the? Um, new state legislation?
Well, that's the question. Is can now he keep it and sell it as a duplex? Or can he sell it now as a duplex? Or must it be a single family house? And is there further relief this board could issue if he wanted to keep it as a duplex?
Well, under the new law, would you have to keep it as a single family residence with an ADU?
Or?
That's the that's the mechanism that would let the new legislation apply to it.
Right, that may be true, yes. Yes, or is there other, I mean, obviously what he wants to do now, sell it. Would he try like sell a duplex? Wouldn't wanna take one more unit out of, you know, out of circulation.
And our uh ADU ordinance. Talks about uh the ADU can only be a certain percentage of the main problem, main dwelling unit.
Yeah, although I don't, we have to, well, that's part of the reason we're here is to think about the the did. Did anything change in the state law that makes that not no longer possible?
Right.
Uh, and so it's been a while. Again, I've got a scratch out that I can go get that Barry.
Yeah.
Uh, on his only ordinance, or they'll say the next time we print.
How how big are the units?
Uh.
No, I can, well, I can look very quickly. That's a good question.
Town with water and not sewer. They need thirty thousand plus an additional ten.
Twenty.
Twenty, and that's the kicker, cause the whole lot's only thirty. Um, yeah, whatever it is, yes.
Whereas I didn't finish reading.
I'm sorry.
Through the back page one.
Yeah, I think I have.
Is there a condition there somewhere?
I have the folder too, if you wanna see it, I mean.
Almost down at the bottom of the.
Page. Yeah, take that one, Matt. You'll be much happier with that. Let me go through how big that building is.
Is the existing duplex twenty four eight?
What?
No, that's that's the main.
Lot size.
Uh, yeah, there we go.
That'd be a big building.
I, well, I heard him say it was a big house and I was thinking, I didn't think of it was a big house.
Twenty four thousand.
Wow, yeah, that is big. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
The four given area variance, huh?
I think they're mirrors of each other. They're twenty six, the whole built structure, twenty six by fifty two.
Two floors, one floor.
I just ran it, just one floor. Where where is this property? It's on Hayward Road over Plainfield Village, um, thirty four Hayward Road, I think, thirty, yeah.
It's, yeah, so it's only uh. Six hundred fifty, six seventy five each.
Is that served by municipal systems? Uh, just water. Has its own septic. Separate septics? Um, well, they got an approval to put a septic in. Um, I don't know if they, or I guess they got approval from subdivision. So the house, the the duplex has its own septic. The house has its own septic.
Okay, so two separate septic.
They are two, they are separate system.
And municipal water serving bowls.
Yes.
I mean, six hundred and seventy six square feet per unit. It's. I mean, I guess they could put more than one bedroom in each one. But that doesn't leave you much living space.
No.
Um.
There, let me see what he's got.
Yeah, what's the property card say?
It says.
Let's see, two thousand five, there's only twenty.
So. So could you take a twenty four hundred square?
Two bedrooms, each one is two.
Two bedrooms?
Two bedrooms. Yeah, there's a total of four bedrooms in the building. Wow, and I think they're mirrors. I think they're exactly the same.
Wow, those are tiny.
Right, um.
So if there really is that small, why couldn't, why couldn't it be? A house and an ADU?
What does our zoning ordinance say about? But that's different than a duplex.
Hmm?
That's different than a duplex, cause.
It is.
Sure it is. Does a house and an ADU imply owner occupancy?
Of one of them.
Okay.
So, yeah, you're right about that though.
But it means it's a marketing thing. So I'm getting it.
Yeah.
And how is this gonna be monitored and enforced? I don't like this decision just from a monitoring standpoint. Like, we gotta enforce the zoning bylaws based on who owns the thing?
Well, again, this was a variance. And there was somebody in somebody's judgment. The best they could do or or a valid thing to do, that is not to say they thought it was a lovely thing to do.
Oh, right, like, I can see all that. You often do things, you're like, well, this is the least bad option we have.
Yeah.
So. Um. Well, it'd be really nice to bring it into conformance, but you can't just because it's on less than thirty thousand already. But that piece. And then you're into the intensity of moves on a small lot and the state law just lets you double it.
Right.
Right, and so. From that perspective. You could do it. It's not as bad. As another.
So it says, except in the case of an ADU being converted from an existing structure. Guess that could be this, the parcel on which the ADU was built will be conforming in lot size and road frontage for the zone.
For a single family.
Except in the case of an ADU being converted from existing structures on a parcel. I guess this is that case.
Technically is, yeah. It's it's not building in the garage or the barn, but it's still being converted from an existing structure.
What happened to the size requirement as it relates to the main house? Did that go away?
Um, I think what they said was you can't limit its size.
You can't limit the ADU size.
Right. Well, up to a certain point, though, I think they they basically made the limit larger.
Right, right, but he's 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 looking for whether there's a, there's a size of the.
Ratio.
A big one. And there isn't a big one, they're both the same.
Right, does very scratched all that. Principle. The property owner must occupy the primary unit. So if it's an ADU, you're not gonna. You're not gonna buy it as an as an investment property.
So I I think part of what you look at is the variance enabled a family to to. Do something longer than they might otherwise have been able to do it. So they've sort of benefited already. By that ruling. Right?
Yeah, I know, I know, I think they probably had the right to continue the use. Well, what the um case did, what the variance did was separate the other house from duplex.
It wasn't, it was all on one lot originally, right?
It was, right.
Right, and so they allowed them to create a nonconforming law.
Well, that was nonconforming too. They didn't, they didn't create one.
The three units.
You just consolidated the nonconformance in one law uh with one with one structure.
Family was able to do a not, oh, that's before the ordinance, never mind, okay.
Yeah.
The third unit wouldn't have been allowed under the ordinance. And now.
Ever.
It was right, so so this is. Legacy thing that.
But they should, they should be able to continue the use as a.
Well, I think.
As a duplex, I would think.
What, when was the duplex built?
Oh, nineteen in the sixties.
Okay, and was was duplex. A use as of right in two thousand five when they applied for this variance?
Um, good question.
You could build duplexes.
Was it?
Well, I'm looking at the village residential now.
In Langley used to do that, remember?
Right, there was a time when any place you could build a house, you could have built a duplex.
Right.
And that went away prior to two thousand five. So in two thousand five, if you wanted to build this, you would have needed a special exception for it, for a multifamily building.
And you would have needed conforming law.
Right. Right, I mean, so, I mean, he's got two ways to go. He can make it a multifamily project. Right, and get a bunch of a a bunch of variances on the size of the law. I mean, at at the time the zoning board made this decision, they felt like. It could be two single, single family homes. Or or it could stay as it always had stayed if the lines were just theoretical because it was a continuous owner. And now, the, and so if you sell it, you gotta convert the.
Right.
The duplex to a single family home, if you sell it to somebody else.
But then.
Now the world has changed a little bit.
Well, but if, so if you say that was the world, the world up until. That that they would have been, once there was a change in ownership.
Standing in the way.
There would have, they would have had to go to a single family home.
Right.
That was one, that was the next state, then the most recent state. Gave you a new option to do with your single family home. You may create a duplex by chopping off a chop, I'm not a duplex, an ADU.
The idea.
And the ADU has to meet the regs of an ADU in that zone, but that's what, I think that's where you start, right?
Right, so if a guy owned that house, if he bought, here's a good good way to look at it, I think. I don't know what the answer is, but if I bought the place and made it a single family house, then a year later said, boy, I'd like to have an ADU here.
I think you could, the only.
I'm I'm on a substandard sized lot, I'm not big enough.
The existing owner is bound by that ruling that says the moment they sell it, discontinued you continuously. It becomes a single family residence.
Well, it has to be converted too.
Yeah, it can, it can only be a single family residence. So the new buyer can only buy a single family residence, even though it looks like a duplex.
Right.
So then.
But if you want a permit, would we let him make it an ADU?
Yes, and I think we do, as long as it can be a conforming ADU by our ordinance.
But it can't be because.
It's a nonconforming law.
Right.
So I think you're hamstrung by the fact that the lot can't be made conformant.
Right, and they and they believe they actually could make, there was a plan to make the law conforming.
Yeah.
Um, it's in, it's in there. Chris Rollins or somebody had drawn it. It it puts a little tail on the duplex. Right, they they basically.
Yeah, cause they're short.
Basically run down here.
Yeah.
Take out his chicken coop or whatever that is.
It's about six thousand square feet.
All right, so what do we do then? What is that? They need six thousand?
It's, it said it's like twenty four thousand and they need thirty thousand in the village residential if there's no.
Okay.
Uh, water and sewer. Oh.
Does the ADU need the extra ten?
Not anymore.
So so nonconforming law.
We have lots of houses on nonconforming.
Exactly, so and I thought, so this, the the, for the ADU thing, it has to be a conforming law. It's not that doesn't get grandfathered. Um, if a if a single family residence is on a nonconforming lot, they can't have an ADU. Even if his grandfather, is that correct? I I thought they could, I thought.
Well, our our ordinance says it can't happen, an ADU can't happen on a nonconforming law.
Right, it doesn't supersede that. No. My my feeling is that um this was an inappropriate decision.
Well, you signed it.
I know I did. It all, it doesn't look like my signature.
What don't you like about?
Um, but, well, for one thing, it's not clear. Were we talking about? The single family house and the duplex being common ownership?
Yes.
What? That's two different ones.
Right, 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 what the ZBA said.
Well, that's 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 what, but that's not where you're at. That's not the question you're asking now. You're, you wanna sell this.
What the ZBA said is, he wants to put this on a separate law, so he got a variance to you to make this law, so.
As long as the other guy owns it.
The zoning board didn't give a shit about the building. It said. That law can be a single family house lot if you ever sell it away from this one.
Yep.
If you don't ever sell it and you just want this law, cause that makes you feel better, you can continue to rent it as a duplex.
Say, I I I feel like if this had gone to court, we would have lost.
Right, we shouldn't have created that, cause you had.
Yeah.
You had an owner who in total had enough real estate to create two. Would come to lots that were appropriate. Might not have liked the lot line. But he could have made two conforming lots. Right?
But at the time, the zoning board saw that a single family house on. Point five of an acre or whatever that is. Was better than a do, three units on one lot. Cause remember, you couldn't have.
Right, you know, I get it, but it it feels like they swap one problem for another.
Lesser problem, and I think we did an area variance on this.
Yeah.
The duplex was essentially grandfathered in on that lot.
Right, so it wasn't like you could.
So what, what is the meaning, what's the use of the? Common ownership? What's the purpose of that? What?
That was to give it an ending.
That's right, yeah.
To give another bite at the apple at some point.
Yeah, we don't.
I'm not saying it was good. I'm saying that I can imagine that's why they did it.
I would think that they came in, we could look at this and say, that was not a good idea.
So why didn't you? Chairman.
I don't, was I chairman then? Two thousand five, yeah, I guess.
So maybe we should focus on the current day.
Yes, perhaps.
If a guy wants to sell that that law.
That's what I was thinking you're talking about.
Right.
Less this question coming up, someone must be asking.
Right, well, I think when he's getting older and when came in. When Spencer, he can't come and talk to you about this because you're judicial born, but I have to provide him some guidance. And so I'm just trying to understand the guidance to provide him.
What's the distance between the lot line and Win's main house? Is it twenty feet?
Yes, I think, yes, the the main house is the, there was no relief for a setback. It was only a relief for area.
Right, so is the, is the setback in the VR zone fifteen feet on the side?
Will be brought to seven by special exception.
Right, so so say you. Move that line, that line to the south closer to his main house.
Right.
You make that lot, what is it? How, can you get it to thirty thousand?
How how can you adjust this by making him go through that when this has been existing with with a. A useless condition. Um, added to it, but the exact living situation on the exact same property is has been in existence since his decision. So what? I mean, what, what are we fixing? Nothing. No, we're not.
Oh.
We already issued an area variance.
We do a bunch of things in our ordinance that say you can do all these things. Unless you're nonconforming, you cannot increase the nonconformance. So increasing conformance is a goal of the order.
Well, by someone else owning that, it doesn't increase nonconformance. All it does is violate a condition.
So many bites at the apple.
Now, well, we're not gonna repair it. I mean, this is just like, were you on the board when we did uh the uh Deli Mart? No.
And I.
What a shoe horror job that was. I mean, because, but mostly, yeah, I think it was.
Okay.
I mean, have there been problems there?
Yeah.
What?
Well, um. It's way too close to the water. What the amount of crap that comes out of that building. But that's alright.
No.
Let's see what we thought, let's see what was going through your, your mind.
This is gonna be a treat.
Yeah, who else was on the board then? Ted was on the board, I know that.
Case is it, what's the number?
Yeah.
You were fighting cellular, you were fighting cellular tower bats. There's a lot of cellular.
After he came back.
Mark Korn was giving you some trouble.
He hasn't been around.
Living in his girlfriend's house. Whatever that is.
I thought it was Hawaii, no?
Barry Schuster wrote a whole memo, what is that?
That's what, that was like. Installing solar panels. No, it's on Mark Korn, you're, you're off the cup there.
This is a must be TV regenerating, no?
It is, that's right.
Alright, I'm gonna flip this to my coworkers and be like, you see what I do on a Monday night. Chairman Colburn opened the hearing by reading the posted notice. The applicant is seeking an area variance from the minimum lot size in the village residential zone. When Spencer Junior explained the project, which is part of the family's desire to convert. The existing duplex on the property to a single family residence to be located in its own law as part of a subsequent subdivision. Currently, the applicant has three residential units on a single eleven acre parcel, a single family home in the duplex. A land use pattern that developed prior to the adoption of plainfield zoning ordinance. If approved, the new law would be point five seven of an acre, twenty four thousand eight hundred square feet. The ordinance requires the lot to be point six nine of an acre, thirty thousand square feet with access to public water or sewer. While technically possible to conform to the ordinance, the applicant contends that the resulting lot shape. Serves no useful purpose and reduces the ability of the existing single family residents to make future improvements to its septic system. Board members asked for a butters comment. George Kohler noted that his family had no objection, however, he does have real concerns about future subdivisions of the backfield. Um, well, she has a common bound, after careful review, the ve, the area variance, careful. The area variance requirement and can, consideration the following. After careful review, the area variance requirements of, of the area variance months and considering the following. That the proposed variance will be less, will lessen the degree of non-conformity. Granting the variance allows the main property due to outbuildings locations to retain some undeveloped land. That might be useful for future septic system replacement. The lack of this same land does not reduce the new lot's ability to replace its existing septic system. The existing duplex has a long history of functioning properly on the proposed parcel. And there is sound evidence that a single family house will be able to do the same. While technically possible, the dividing the property can meet the area requirement, the resulting lock configuration. Would be such that it adds little to the functionality of the proposed lot. Member Moynihan made a motion to approve the variances proposed, noting that above all factors taken into concern. Make granting the variance reasonable, the motion was seconded and, you know, you guys voted on it unanimously.
So I'm puzzled about something, it sounded like, if I heard you right. Their goal at the time was to take the existing duplex building and make it a single family home.
That wasn't their preferred goal, but that's what they said they'd do, so they could sell it.
So it didn't sound in there like it was a trade, it was like, that's what they asked to do. And that's what they were given a yes to do.
They want.
They might still do it.
And they want relief from that.
Right, now they wanna sell it as a duplex.
And so I think that they could come back to us and ask for relief from that.
What you're asking now is what we might, what would, how we might.
Well, not even how you might rule, but just what direction that, because I, I don't think we wanna talk about how you might rule, but what would you. But what, what, what is the, a proper thing to, what are we applying for in this? I mean.
On a change of view, on a, do you need a change of use to go from a multi-family duplex to a single family? Would that be a change of use?
In most cases, you do it with a building permit, because you had a lot big enough to be there and you had a two, duplex and you wanted to make it a single family home, you just do it. If these people walked in and said, we're ready to convert, we're gonna sell it to Steve and we're ready to convert to a single family house, then they just get a building permit, take out a kitchen. But this is, of course, that's not what they, at, at the moment.
Okay, but see, see, that's, that's where I'm asking, if they could do that, and the new state. Regulation say we must approve. ADUs wherever there's a single, wherever, wherever a single family residence or lot is exists. Wherever it exists, we have to approve an ADU.
Right, well, I think there's two paths, one is, could it be a single family house with an ADU?
The first question is, could it be a single family residence? And that, the answer to that is yes, is that right?
By, by, by ZBA decision.
So if it could be a single family residence and we're required to allow an ADU on any lot that has a single family residence. Then by, if, if that's correct, then they can have an ADU on this property.
But they can have a duplex.
But the duplex, they like, would it have to add the condition that the owner lived in one of them?
Right, so that's the thing, is that there are now some new strings attached to that. But that's what they would get by right.
Yes.
Right.
And what I'm, I'm saying they should get that by right, and I don't know whether that's true.
Well, that's, that's the thing.
But that's, but that's, that's the.
But it may not be, they may have to rearrange, I don't know why they should have to, but they might. If you follow that path, they, if there's a.
They're both small, why would, why would they have to do it?
Right, I'm trying to find that language. Well, it should have been, I would have thought it, we must have taken it out before there's state law, because Barry has never struck it. It's not here, nor is it struck through.
Well, that's what I'm thinking is, we haven't had to talk about that.
Right. If this, if this property was to change hands next week.
Yeah.
And I assume it's occupied.
Yeah.
And the occupancy didn't change. What happens?
The act of selling triggers.
Well, in the accessory dwelling unit, if it's not a multi-family use, two houses, two or three, four, five, whatever, but two in this case. If it's not a multi-family, then the, then the owner has to live in one of the two units.
Yes, but what, but what you're asking you, if somebody were to buy today, what happens?
Immediately.
As soon as the ownership changed, it triggers. Yes, but as soon as the ownership changes, it triggers what the decision said, that they could no longer have it.
Right. Yeah, so then what happens?
It's a single family residence.
It's not what I'm getting at, what happens? Make it a single family house, because now you own it. Those people have to go.
And is that.
But, but the issue, that's what I'm getting at, like, what's the next step? It's like, okay. But I think what he's saying is. Uh, and this was almost more than a month ago, I had the conversation with Wynn. I think the ideal, in the ideal world, they'd be able to sell it, if I wanna sell it as a duplex, what am I gonna do? What, what am I applying for? Even though I said I wouldn't.
They can get more money as a duplex, as a rental, and somebody buying it as an investment.
Yeah, so the ADU is probably a non-starter.
Well, but that's, but that's the only, from my point of view, that's the only way they can get.
Two occupancies.
They have two occupancies right now.
As soon as they sell it, they have it as one occupancy.
I'm, I'm not so sure that's an enforceable condition.
Yeah, that's my.
Because whether it's legal or not, that's what we said, or our, the board said, right? So it would be challenged, but, but if, if Steve as the administrator was to follow what little guidance he has given. It's that decision that he has to follow.
That's, that's why he, they could come back here and ask us to modify the decision.
Yes. So, but, but let's preemptively, prior to selling, they would have to.
Let's understand what Matt's saying a little bit more. We created the law and it happened to have a duplex on it, so do you think they just get to retain the duplex?
Yep.
Yep, I think so.
That was kinda where my question is going.
There's not like a, a, a condition or a trading thing with, with variances, with the typical variants, you're asking for. In this case, they're asking for, to change the lot size, right, to get under thirty thousand square feet.
To get along, that has, just happens to have this building.
To be able to, to create a lot that contains this pre-existing duplex that was legally.
So if you got, if you got a variance that says that, uh, I mean.
But it holds a single family house better than it holds a duplex.
Yeah, but what, what, what Dick has said, what Dick has said over the years is that whatever we do. Doesn't stay with the owner, stays with the land.
Right.
But in this particular decision, it violated that.
Well, it never sold.
No, but it's, but the decision said that it doesn't go with the land, it goes with the owner.
But it's, it says it, it goes with a continuous owner, I can buy it if I buy all the property and keep it as a duplex.
Okay.
I think it's, I think it's an unenforceable condition either way. The, is that, the variant.
So should we try and fix it?
Yeah. So, so.
If, if, if this lot were sold to new ownership, not. Common with the, the owner of the other lot, so now you've got two different owners. I think that new owner could assert, right, that this is the, this is the duplex. That's been in existence, the variance was granted as to the lot size. Yes, I, I see that there is this writing in the decision that says. The, the, the ZBA wants it to become a single family house if it ever changes.
But, but what about the applicant saying, this is my offer, it will be a single family house? That, does that, is, does the ZBA just ignore that when it?
Yeah, no, we don't, we don't.
But that's what Spencer basically came in and said, I wanna create this lot and when I sell it, it'll be a single family house.
Right, and we made a decision based on that, but we get to revisit our decisions if somebody asks us to.
Right, but I'm listening to Matt say, I don't, I think it's a decision that's not enforceable.
Well, what's even better than is, is for us to, before somebody challenges it.
Well, remember, if somebody buys it and the town does nothing, it just, it just, it continues, right? We, we would have to take an action, uh, if the Spencers didn't, because they didn't wanna live next door duplex, if the Spencers didn't do this. And, and I bought it and started renting it, the town would either get in the way, or the town wouldn't not do anything.
I think, I think if it, if it got sold and was continuing to be used as a duplex. And it came to the zoning administrator's attention.
Right.
That there's now a conflict between what was in that written decision and the use that's now happening there. The zoning administrator would have to get a legal opinion about whether that condition is enforceable, if you got an opinion that it was unenforceable. Then you would take no further enforcement action.
So that's the thing we could do now.
Yeah, okay. And, and if somebody challenged that, then it would come back to us.
At least you did your due diligence, they could.
Right, and so, but what I'm trying to understand it, and when we review variances, Matt, you were not on the board at this time. When we're reviewing a variance, if an owner who wants the variance throws out a teaser. Hey, part of my application is it isn't a duplex, it's a single family house, so we have to ignore the teaser?
I think so, under the, under the current variance criteria, it's the, there's the five criteria that are laid out in the statute. Because you, you're looking at, a, a, and again, this goes to like the idea of variances being constitutional escape valves, right? Like, we're, we're not giving variances out because it seems like a good idea or. You know, this seems like a, 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 a property where it won't be so bad, or, or we like it and think it's a good idea. It's, it's the, the, the town has said that you, thou shalt not do X on this property. But we have to grant this variance as an escape valve to allow some reasonable use to the property. Because if we don't grant the variance, then it's unreasonably difficult for the property owner to make reasonable economic use of the property. So the, the idea of like a, a sweetener that they're gonna be willing to do something different in the future, I think doesn't factor in.
So that's where we got derailed. When he came in and said, I'll make it a single family house when I sell it. And Matt saying, well, that was nice of him to offer, but you, you, you should have said no. Should have said it doesn't count.
Right.
But he's got the law now, it exists, I mean, that's.
Well, well, we, our goal had little to do with the ownership, I mean, that was, that was a way to lessen. Effect of it, but, but we were trying to lessen the non-conformity of the, the larger law.
Yeah, and let a, and let a resident do something with his property that he wanted to do, which is convert it to a single family house. And put it on a lot that there's a dozen houses right next to it on those same size lots. But it's a single family house at that point, and if they wanna walk in and make a, an application for a duplex. They'll have to convince the ZBA to let them have a duplex at that time, but Matt saying, we let the, the horse out of the barn. You gave him the law, he's got a duplex.
They already had a duplex.
Yeah, right, I, I, I wasn't on the board, I don't know what, what all the other facts were, but. Theoretically, if the board reviewed the variance criteria and agreed to grant a variance with respect to the lot size area. That variance is in effect, so now it's a, a non-conforming.
It's a point five two acre lot with a duplex on it.
And what is the neighboring acres?
So, so what, what the cleanest thing be, what Dick said to just, to, to revisit it and say that this condition?
Apparently, we don't need to, at least based on Matt's opinion that.
Well, that's right, based on his opinion, but the, the person would have to jump through some more hoops to be able to. Have it be correct.
I, I don't think so, I, I, I think it'd be hard to us for an at, to act without like an application before us, like who's. Who's requesting it? If the property owner wanted to come and say, hey, I'm worried about this and I don't wanna have this. Can I have this clarified, then that would be good cause to do it, perhaps.
It's probably better to have made a mistake than it is to, to grant a special exception now for a multi-family house on a lot that's not even close. Right, because that, then everybody that has.
So what are you saying our answer to the future use of that property is?
Well, I think you tell when Spencer, you can sell it and do with, with it what you want, I mean, I tell when Spencer, you can sell it, do with it what you want. And we just see where the chips go, I mean, the, the, now.
Yeah, but the D S, you have to have some kind of.
I mean, what's gonna be a little bit of an issue is they got, whoever buys it, their bank may say, the hell is this? It is a duplex. And so we may have to deal with it then, this could stay in the Spencer, this could be another ten years with the Spencers, I mean, they, they.
You can't retire, you've been here too long.
Right, no, he wants to, God, doesn't he? But I, I mean, I'm look, I, I think Wynn just wants to know if he has to do anything when he sells it. And the, and I think the answer is, get as far as you want, win and see what happens.
So, so you're gonna, uh, ask Barry about it and get an opinion?
If and when somebody comes.
Yeah, I mean, it's a kind, well, it's kind of a struggle now, right, because.
Cause he's so close to retiring.
No, no, because when he's got a duplex with a decision that says it's gotta be a single family house. And new owners may or may not like that decision, may never, probably never see it. What do you hear? There's no case to hear.
No, no, but I was asking if you were gonna get a legal opinion from Barry, not from us.
I, I can do what, I'm, the only reason I brought it to you, I mean, I can do whatever you want me to do.
And then you can stick that in here, and if somebody wants to buy it and they're concerned about previous zoning. Um, decision, then they'll look at it and they say, oh, well, this part isn't in effect anymore, it's been.
Or you, uh, to Steve's point, you can just wait until they ask to see the file, because they're.
The current owner should know at least a little bit of guidelines to be able to market it, and that's.
Right, but it is, it, it is.
Permitted single family home option.
I mean, I do remember in the, when the record reflects it, whether we properly considered or you guys have properly considered it or not. The owner said, I wanna convert this to a single family house and put it on a separate lot. And, and that seemed to make good sense to the ZBA at that moment in time. So I think the intention was, you were never gonna get that lot with a duplex.
Right.
You were gonna get that lot with a single family house when it gets old.
I think you, you live with that until somebody challenges it.
I mean, I think one of the things the town. My, my, my comment to, uh, Spencer would be. You can sell it any way you wanna sell it.
Buyer beware.
The buyer may encounter an enforcement action due to that decision. And that may not be the last you hear of it, whether it's a title search, title insurance, or misrepresentation. There is some risk to the seller in this scenario and, you know, title insurance companies would be in play. Assuming that one part, partaked in the purchase. It, it, cause I don't think they'd catch this, like, you're talking about a bank or something, I don't think a title search would find this.
No, I always, no, only an appraiser who would walk in and actually look at the file, but I think they, but the record is there, the record is what it is.
Come up when, you know, and property changes hands. The town becomes aware of violation, takes action, issues some.
It is probably poor practice to just leave something dangling.
And then, and then the buyer is gonna get blind side with a violation.
No, no, what's, what's in the file says, the owner already agreed to, to make that a single family house when he sold it. That's what he.
So I think the answer is, in my little mind, is that, is that when Spencer sends me a letter, Steve Allen's zoning administrator. I'd like to, I'd like to retain the duplex now and sell the property. And I look at it and I give the letter and the decision and this conversation to Barry, we let Barry make a decision, that goes in the file. And that's the end of the conversation. We let Barry make a decision, that goes in the file, and that's the end of the conversation.
So yeah, I think. I think that's fine, I think that's the way to do it.
Um but it is, but I I've learned something tonight in that if. In that, when you consider an area variance, you consider it the lot, not the use that's on it. Because that use, even if I tell you what I wanna do, that doesn't, that's not, I'm not required to do that.
Right, I mean, we talked about that for years, that that it goes with the land instead of rather than.
Right, although I own it right now, I control it, and I say, when I sell it, I'm gonna, it's gonna be a single family house.
The variance isn't.
We can't buy that, we it's like, it's like when somebody subdivides and says I'm gonna hold the lot forever, and that's, it doesn't matter to us, right? We we have to assume they're gonna sell the lot.
Right, but and this this variance is is, it's not a use. And so, once it has the variance, it's just a lot.
Right.
And it had a duplex on it that had been there, grandfathered.
And that's got a separate legal train of.
Right, and and I can see exactly what we did, is the designing board said, oh, the guy is gonna make it a single family house, gonna be like every other lot in the village. Yeah, that makes good sense, let's let's do it rather than, and that's a better law than a lot with a tail. Better law.
I get it.
And and so we said, oh, that makes good sense, that's what C B As do, but it may be more than what C B As can do.
Yeah, I think so, I think we overstepped a little bit there.
But in the vein of helping a guy do what what seemed very reasonable.
Road to hell is paved with good intentions.
Well, and I expect that probably there were some butters that appreciated that.
Yeah, they don't wanna.
Well, it's interesting, it'll be interesting to see what happens to the problem, I mean, that is a very old duplex. In Plainfield, it's been there forever, and will somebody buy it as a single family house and say, I'll put an A D U off at the side? I mean, on the other unit and just rent it, or will it be an investment property, probably an investment property.
Right, somebody will fight to drive an ad.
Since this is certainly theoretical. You say it's an old building.
Yeah, like nineteen, yeah, sixty five vintage. My house.
Okay, like, so you have to lay a law like this, like. I can see, I can see a possibility where somebody comes in and just levels it and starts over.
Right, and then they gotta come for a special exception to get.
That's what that was be my question, what happens to that?
Right, and and they come in and they don't have enough lot.
Right.
That they have a single, they have a single family, they can put a single.
Absolutely, do it tomorrow.
That's right.
That's what I was getting at, like, it's always a single family house law.
Sure, that's a single family law forever.
And, you know, it's got road coverage, it's. And it would have enough to hit setbacks and whatnot. Yep, yep, that, when when critically that out, that lot is.
How much could you expand it, could you put a garage?
In terms of setbacks, the buildings don't need anything. I'm talking about a different foot. Yeah. Not the same thing, like.
I'm just saying, you know, at some point, what do you, how do you deal with that on a nonconforming lot? Somebody comes to you and says, I wanna do something that pushes you to forty five percent lot coverage.
Well, then you can't do that.
Right.
Right, so I think, but if they knock the building down, they start with a clean slate, they get whatever they get.
Yeah.
On a lot. Max percentage, like, I guess what I was asking is, how do you calculate? Your percent lot coverage, is it still of the smaller number, right?
The lot, the lot has a, that's the, that's what it is, the denominator, yeah.
Alright, I'll I'll have a conversation with, I mean, if if when it's trying to clean up his record. As he gets ready to market the property, I'll tell him what he should do for us and we'll we'll.
I'm over adjourned.
Yeah, second.
All those in paper?
Alright, alright.
My wife's having a new knee tomorrow.
Oh, really? Oh, that's a home comforter, she's gonna be upset.
Book club right now.